Good evening. Welcome to this evening's council meeting for Monday, September the, I've forgotten what the day it is, 18th. And I'm Mayor Ted Schaefer, and with me are my council colleagues. I have Councilor Jack Arnold, Councilor Paul Albrecht, Councilor Rudy Stortebum. On the other side, I have Councilor Gail Martin, Councilor Val Vanderbroeck, Councilor Nathan Pahal. And at the staff table, I have Darren Light, who is our Director of Corporate Services. We have Kelly Kenny.
...and this area is parts addition. Even after expansion, there is still 137 parking spots, parking stalls left, which is above of required 120. So in this case, it looks okay. This page actually is the same as the previous one in a bigger scale and shows additional information for the slope elevations and grades around the buildings and so on. Now, the next three pages, I would run quickly because they just show like a key plans, show the amount, illustrate amount of any addition. Just took the black identity of the Mini. This is how the standards of BMW goes. White is a BMW identity and black is a Mini identity. So just to follow the same look, we just took the black identity of the Mini and transferred it to the parts department, which is here. With the same materials, same finishing, which include black alucabond panels with white frames and big panels of glazing. And that's same as Mini. It's a black tinted glass and black aluminum frames. And because the parts, the big glass openings, windows in the Look at the wall and with white alucabond top and parapet. And this is basically it about this building. Doesn't come through. This is page is just for landscaping, and it shows that not much of landscaping, of new landscaping is happening here. We try to preserve existing landscape as much as possible, and there is a little bit of change in this area and additional landscape islands in here in front of the building. Oh, this is it. It's coming. Wow.
Unanimous. So we'll see you in a couple minutes when we deal with it. We just have to get rid of the preliminaries here from the other side.
You want me to step out, right?
No, you can stay there.
Okay.
Adoption of the minutes of the regular meeting held from September 11th. And I've got one change on there, that the minutes of the regular meeting held on September 11th be adopted as amended under the Section 5 of the motion regarding Fraser Sewage Area DCCs increased by striking out the words "Valley," where it appears in the motion. And Ms. Kenny asked us to put that in there. So motion by Councilor Martin, Councilor Arnold, all those in favor? It's unanimous for. Now, the business arising from committee of the whole is that development permit application, DP 09-17, to accommodate a 10,000 square foot service and parts department expansion for the BMW Mini Langley dealership located at 6025 Collection Drive be approved. I need a motion. Councilor Albrecht and Councilor Arnold, is there a discussion? Councilor Pahal.
Thank you, through the mayor and maybe to you. Could you comment? Are you retaining the existing green wall and the electric vehicle charging station?
That's a good question. I'm sorry, I didn't point on it. If you look on this elevation again, this place represent the former green wall, which was turning around the corner. And because it's not anymore like a closure of the whole building, there was a decision made together with BMW corporate to replace it with just a black wall because it just divide two parts. It's not united, it's just divided. That's how, you cannot see anymore this green wall here.
And just a follow-up. Are you retaining the electric vehicle charging station?
Sorry, one more time.
I think you have an EV charging station there currently. I could be mistaken.
No, it's So far, I'm not aware of this.
All right, doesn't matter.
Further discussion? Councilor Arnold.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We dealt with this at the Advisory Planning Commission on Wednesday, and there were a number of comments from the committee, all of them positive. And so it was unanimous from them to forward it on to us, obviously, and to make the decision.
Good. It's great to hear. You keeping your committee active? Good. So I need a, without further discussion, I need a motion. All those in favor? All in favor? Done. That was Arnold Albrecht there. And next item we have is community spotlights. B.C. Lottery Corporation have Greg Walker and Lara Garretts to the mic. And don't forget to use the mic nice and loud, please.
Or yell.
We're very good at being loud.
Speak for yourself. Ooh, nice. Looks like technology is just about going to work with us, Mr. Mayor, so I can probably get started. Thank you very much for, good evening to you and to members of council. Am I projecting all right? Awesome. It's a pleasure to see so many familiar faces on both sides of you, Mr. Mayor, and a pleasure, as I said, to Ms. Hilton, to be back in the city of Langley as always, but also to see so many familiar faces at these tables, Francis and Darren and Kim. It's good to see you all. So I don't need to go on at great length about who I am. I'm Greg Walker. I'm the Director of Public Affairs. You may not know, and certainly a pleasure tonight to bring with me from the Public Affairs team, Lara Garretts. So again, appreciate your time tonight. We had a couple of, our presentation tonight, a couple of points and updates that we want to provide about what we're doing as a corporate, on a corporate-wide basis, but also we have quite a bit of information specific to Langley, which I think that you will find interesting. I'm going to turn over the microphone to Lara to speak to that for a little while, and then I'll be batting cleanup, Mr. Mayor, on the issue of responsible gambling with quite a few new developments on that side I think that you will be interested in. Lara?
Thanks, Greg. So I know that many of you are quite familiar with who we are at BCLC, so I'll kind of keep the preamble short, but BCLC's mandate is to conduct and manage commercial gambling in British Columbia, and to do so in a socially responsible way for the benefit of British Colombians. More important, though, is the why we were created. We were created to offer exceptional entertainment, to benefit B.C. communities, and to help them thrive and grow. As a crown corporation, we represent government, and we report to the Honorable David Eby, and that is through our Board of Directors. Our actions are subject to B.C.'s Gaming Control Act, under which each of our employees is registered. Guess I should move forward on our thing here. So we have a unique made-in-B.C. operating model at BCLC whereby private sector service providers own or lease gambling facilities and operate them on our behalf. So if you were to walk into a casino, the easiest way to explain it is that BCLC owns most of the gambling equipment. So that would be things like the cards, the chips, the slot machines, for example. BCLC also makes the decisions regarding the types of games that are offered and the quantity of games that are offered, and we do that using our expert understanding of the market. Our service providers, on the other hand, they build the facilities and they operate the facilities. And that includes additional entertainment amenities, things like restaurants, conference centers, hotels. In return for operating a facility, service providers receive a commission. And BCLC has agreements with about 17 different service providers in B.C., including Gateway Casinos and Entertainment Limited, which, as you know, operates the Cascades Casino Langley. You might not know that in the last fiscal year, BCLC gambling activities generated $1.3 billion, and yes, that's billion with a B, in net income to the province of B.C. This revenue supports things like healthcare, education, and community groups right across the province. Revenue generated by casino gambling, as you also probably know, benefits local projects and initiatives in communities like Langley, which receives something called a host local government payment for hosting a gambling facility. We're so proud of Cascades here in Langley. It's a true entertainment hub in the Fraser Valley that offers a great mix of gaming, restaurants, pubs, conference facilities, and a hotel. There's approximately 940 slot machines on the gaming floor right now and 28 table games, and we continue to monitor this mix of gaming to make sure that it best reflects the needs of the market. As mentioned earlier, the city of Langley receives a 10% share of the net gaming income generated at Cascades, and during the last fiscal year, this was $6.9 million. Thanks, Greg. I'll do that for you, too.
Yeah, I'm here for you.
And as you know, the city used a portion of that revenue to fund initial construction of the TIM's Community Center. Gaming revenue has also helped to fund projects like the Roberts Bank rail corridor overpasses and the Fraser Highway Bridge. Gaming revenue also benefits community nonprofit organizations right across the province, and that's through the province of B.C.'s Community Gaming Grant Program. Last year, the province of B.C. gave out $135 million in grants to nonprofit community organizations, 74 of which were right here in Langley. They include the Langley Hospice Society, the Langley Community Music School Society, Langley Senior Resources Society, and the Langley Secondary School PAC. And Greg and I could go on and on and on, and if you come visit us at the UBCM booth next week, we can show you all of the grant recipients from Langley. In total, those grant recipients received $1.9 million last year to continue the good work that they do. BCLC and Gateway are committed to supporting Langley in more ways than what I've just spoken about as well. More than 520 people work at the casino, which also supports a variety of local vendors and suppliers. We also provide support for local and nonprofit organizations and events, and this summer we were so proud to support the Arts Alive Festival, and later this month, we're sponsoring the McBurney Plaza Summer Series. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Greg, and he's going to tell you a little bit more about our player health strategy.
Are you going to click?
I'm going to click.
All right. Thanks, Lara. I wanted to, as I said, back clean up on an issue that's very important to us at BCLC. Has in the past been referred to as responsible gambling and addressing issues pertaining to problem gambling. And tonight, I'm here to tell you a little bit about some changes in direction in that program and to give an overall feel about where we're going to go on this issue. It's an issue that I can speak to with a great deal of detail with this council because this council, amongst other things, has in the past, with help from Ms. Hilton and others and staff, hosted the Responsible Gambling Awareness Week, which was one of our first forays in reaching out to the community on this subject. We have taken a new leaf on that, and that's what I wanted to talk to you about tonight because the Responsible Gambling Awareness Program focused specifically on folks that were challenged by our products, and we wanted to open that up to an approach that considered all of our players at British Columbia Lottery Corporation, and hence the expression "player health." It's a comprehensive program that's been endorsed by the corporation as a whole, and it has four pillars to this strategy. So let's have a look at those. One of the strategies that we're talking about is looking, using all the tactics that we have in our, that are available to us at British Columbia Lottery Corporation, to ensure that our players are informed about the nature of our products. It's essential to safer behavior in gaming that our players are able to understand and access information about our products. So informed decision-making means everything from ensuring that people are aware of the odds to knowing what the problem gambling hotline number is. Those are the kinds of things on an awareness level that we will continue to do under this pillar of the player health strategy. When people know about the risks that are involved, and people know how to access help if they need it, those are all important parts of this part of the strategy, and what we put under the term of informed decision-making. The second aspect is about positive play. And positive play refers to the fact that we know that we can have an emphasis on the consequences of risky play. We know we can do that. But again, it focuses on a very small majority, and again, that majority or minority of our players in British Columbia, 3.3% of adults, have a challenge with our product. But the number of players that we have at BCLC is much larger. In fact, it's very high in the majority of the population. So it's important for us to focus on healthy behaviors, the sorts of decisions that make sense, like establishing budgets before you go into a gaming facility, that kind of thing. Those are the focuses under this strategy of positive play. Now, the third point, and I'm glad that the slide before you at this point focuses on something a little bit different, because you could be forgiven at this point to think that BCLC was strictly a facility, a casino operator. But in fact, our number two business unit continues to be lotteries. And so you can see upfront, or on the slide, the important, kind of a then and a now approach to a scratch-and-win game. And what we're talking about here is in reducing problem gambling prevalence with BCLC products, the scratch-and-win ticket on your left, called Gingerbread Dough, is a $2 scratch-and-win ticket that we used to provide, make available. And it being gingerbread men, it has appeal, it could be interpreted as having appeal to children. You won't find this ticket anymore because we do not want to have children or encourage children to play our products. And as you all know, only those 19 years of age and older can play our products, go into our facilities. And so the Seasons Greetings $2 ticket is a revision of this, and it's a focus on a very detailed aspect of our scratch-and-win category, but I think it drills home the point, that there's no room for those underage to be playing our products at the British Columbia Lottery Corporation. We have a wide number of ways that we, both at casinos and lottery, that we can influence through our products, the kind of behavior and play that we want, and this is just one small example of pillar number three in the player health strategy. And then finally, the slide above would indicate to you that someone in a customer service capacity is ensuring that there is proper referral and support for our players. Their problem gambling counseling, as you may know, in British Columbia is free, but it's getting that help when you need it. We need to make sure that our customer service folks are aware of this and getting that messaging across, but that's only one small part. We have a commitment in BCLC for our casino employees. Every single casino employee goes through an appropriate response training program. So it's a program to make sure that they know, because they're going to be on the front line, they are going to be, have a good likelihood that if they've seen one who's, someone who's challenged by these products, that's where they're going to see them, on the floor of a casino. So they have to be informed about initial response, the kinds of concerns that come forward. forward from our players who may be challenged, and make sure that they're funneled into the right direction to get the help that they need. So an effective referral and treatment program, again, is something that we do throughout the system, from customer service to on the floor of the casinos. Now, all of those strategies would not be possible if we did not have, in our arsenal, a very important weapon, and that weapon's called GameSense. GameSense is the presence that we have on a casino floor. Very unlike most casinos that you would go to, certainly south of the border, you would not see a facility on the floor of the casino, including the Cascades Casino here in the city of Langley, that is staffed and provides information to those who may want it about any aspect of our games, if they need referrals, if they need help. GameSense is a very innovative program that we started in 2009, and makes sure that that information is available. That's a key component, and will continue to do so. The expansions that I think that you'll see, the GameSense that are part of our player health program, you'll see additional staff being added to GameSense locations to make sure that all of our facilities have that kind of a referral process. So we're continuing with that program. We know it's successful. We know, using the positive-play approach, that it will continue to be successful and that our players will be responsive to it. I want to close on a note about something that's very exciting for us at BCLC, and I talked about the success of the GameSense program and its brand. You will see the GameSense brand if you happen to go to a facility in the province of Alberta, or the provinces Saskatchewan, or the province of Manitoba, because all of those governments have purchased the GameSense brand from us, from BCLC, and have implemented it, because they thought that the approach was right, the focus on informing players was correct, and the effectiveness we've been able to demonstrate. And I'm very happy to say and excited to say that not only have those governments done so, also the government of the state of Massachusetts has purchased GameSense, and most recently, one of the largest and most successful casino operators in the world, MGM of Las Vegas, has purchased the GameSense brand, and they will be implementing it in the next year to their seventeen locations throughout the United States, approximately 70,000 employees that would be getting this training, a huge program, but obviously another one that speaks to the success of the GameSense brand and the approach that we're taking to ensure player health. Before I finish, I do want to say that as part of this community outreach that brought us before you today, Mr. Mayor, we will be in Langley again tomorrow. Laura and I are going to the Chamber of Commerce, starting at 5:00 over at Cascades Casino. I do, this is very important that I mention this, and hope to be able to see all of you there. That would be great, but we'll be there again tomorrow as part of this program, and we'll be sharing more information about how BCLC plays it forward.
And we have a fun trivia game to make sure you guys were listening tonight as well tomorrow, so I hope to see you there.
We hope to see you there, and I'd happy to take any questions you may have, Mr. Mayor.
Questions at all from anybody? My colleague would like to research the MGM one, so.
Counselor Martin?
I know exactly where she's coming from, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. I don't have a question, but I do have some comments. In regards to the presentation that Larry gave, we have benefited, the city of Langley certainly, from having the casino here in the way of dollars and cents. I believe it's around 10 years, $73 million, and that does a lot for our infrastructure. And in regards to your presentation, Greg, I'm really happy that you're getting this out into the public. But no matter what you say, there are going to be those people that are totally opposed to gaming, and those that enjoy the gaming, and you're never going to change that, and I don't think you're trying to change that. But I do applaud BCLC for the programs that they have had in the past and are going to implement. I think back over the summer where BCLC did some advertising in our local paper in regards to the benefits to Langley City, in regards to the Timms Centre and other things, and some of the comments that were made on gaming. And I understand those people, you're never going to change their mind, but I do think that BCLC is responsible in trying to help those people that may have a problem. And you know, one of the comments that kept repeating itself was the little old ladies that go and spend their pensions and stuff like that, but obviously you say your staff is trained to pick up where there may be a problem in that regard. So I do applaud BCLC. I think we've had a great relationship, certainly with you, over the past several years, and again, you're not going to change everybody's mind, but it's each individual's choice, and yes, there are those that are going to get caught in the gambling world, and hopefully BCLC employees will pick that up. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor.
Counselor Paul.
Thank you. That was a great presentation. Quickly, how long has this player health program been going for? Is that brand-new? Or?
The Responsible Gambling Program has been in effect for seven, seven or eight years now. As I said, and I appreciate the question, Counselor, we've changed that focus from one of awareness and building education amongst our players to the player health strategy. So we've renamed it, and we've changed the focus, because we want to move beyond just it being an awareness program.
It's pretty exciting, but it's new, that particular refocusing, though, right?
Yes.
Because I haven't seen it before.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, through you.
Thank you.
Anymore? Seeing none? I'd just like to reiterate what my council colleague has said about working in the community. I know BCLC has worked to give to some of the charities that are in this community, and that's BCLC. But Gateway Gaming itself, through the city, helps smaller groups or organizations.
Absolutely.
You know, and the $500 or the $1,000 that the charities that, you know, we help and support in this community goes a long way. I could name quite a few of them, but to BCLC and to Gateway Gaming, you know, it's great that they're good corporate citizens. And I believe BCLC was part of the McBurney Plaza corporate sponsorship. There's a few others probably in the city, you know, helping with the overpasses, which in turn helps, you know, communities around us, surrounding us, Surrey, you know, the township of Langley.
Yep.
And that goes a long way. And, you know, as my colleague said, that it's nice to be involved, that you're involved with it. So again, we shall see you tomorrow. I know there's a few of us going to be there, and...
And some will be at UBCM, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, at UBCM, yes.
I can think of one in particular.
Alrighty. We'll catch you at both places.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Members of council.
Next, we have under the Langley Environmental Partners Society. We have Carly here, and welcome.
Thank you.
And don't forget to have the mic really close to you, so people can hear you.
Hello, Mr. Mayor and council. Thank you for having me here. Can you hear me all right? My name is Carly Stromston, and I work at Langley Environmental Partners Society, also known as LAPS. Over the past six years, LAPS has received funding from the city of Langley for the Summer Youth Employment Project. Youth hired by this project perform invasive plant removal in the city of Langley that the city staff would not normally get to. So this is a picture of the eco crew this summer. So the eco crew consists of a coordinator, myself, two post-secondary students, Nicole and Ainsley, and three secondary students, Sophia, Rohan, and Evan. So this is just an outline of some of the topics I'll be covering over this presentation. So firstly, I'll talk about some of the goals that we set for the summer. Secondly, some of the results and the work that we did in the field, and then lastly, some of the community education. So overall, our goal was to provide employment to Langley youth, to enhance the natural habitat in the city of Langley, and to provide community education on invasive plants. So this is just a list of some of the results from the summer. The focus was on blackberry removal this year at select sites, including Bryan Lagoon and Sendal Gardens. But overall, we did invasive species removal at seven sites and removed over 600 meters squared of invasive plants. We also did invasive mapping this year that was new along all the trails. We removed over 118 pounds of garbage, and also new this year was pollinator monitoring. We attended eight community events, and the crew gained some valuable skills and knowledge while enhancing the natural habitat in the city of Langley. So the crew recorded the location of invasive plant species along all the trails using GPSs. This information is really valuable for prioritizing areas for invasive species removal. So this mapping of the trail system is a first step in a larger invasive species mapping within the city of Langley. Also new this year was pollinator monitoring. This is also a first step in enhancing and creating more habitat for pollinator species. So this is just a map that was generated from the data collected from the invasive species mapping. So this is actually Pleasantale Creek Trail. You'll see on the right-hand side, there's a legend showing the list of invasive plant species that were found along this trail. So the purple dots are blackberry, and you can also see quite a bit of ivy in the green. This is a heat map that is generated from the same data. So a heat map shows the concentration of invasive plant species in a certain area. So the red dots show the highest concentration of invasive plant species. So those areas were targeted by the crew this summer. So this is just a list of some of the invasive plant species that were removed this summer along the trails and some parks. So Himalayan blackberry was a large part of the invasive species that we removed. So I'm just going to show you some before-and-after pictures of some of the sites that we worked at this summer. So this is Langley Creek Trail. A lot of blackberry was removed here, and then the reed canary grass was stomped on. A fair amount of work was done at Bryan Lagoon. A lot of blackberry was removed here. Quite a few native plant species are found at Bryan Lagoon, so in this picture you can see some red osier dogwood. Blackberry was removed to free up the red osier dogwood here. Another picture of Bryan Lagoon, a before-and-after picture, so some blackberry was removed here. Sendal Gardens, a before-and-after picture, a lot of blackberry and ivy growing up the trees, and morning glory was removed from this site. At Pleasantale Creek Trail, we had lots of ivy growing up the trees, so that was taken down. As well, on the right-hand side, you'll see lamium. Lamium's a ground cover, it's an invasive plant, so a lot of that was removed from that site, too. At Bryan Pond, purple loostrife flower heads were cut to prevent further spread. Purple loostrife is a very invasive species that outcompetes a lot of our native plants in the wetland ecosystems. We removed 118 pounds of garbage from the trails and from some road sides. Focus here was Pleasantale Creek Trail. About over 10 cleanup events were done this summer. And this is just a list of some of the events that we attended. So the crew talked to the public about invasive species, the identification of them, what they can do if they see them, and as well as proper disposal of green waste. In addition, the crew talked to the public about watershed stewardship education, so we had aquatic invertebrates, and the public learnt about what makes for a healthy stream. And in partnership with the city of Langley, LAPS will be doing some upcoming projects. So after the removal of invasive plant species at Sendal Gardens and Bryan Lagoon, we will be doing some planting here in the near future. As well, we will be doing pollinator habitat creation in the B.C. Hydro Right-of-Way over the next two years. So thank you very much for having me here, and thank you very much for continuing to support the Summer Youth Employment Project.
Thank you for your presentation. Questions? Counselor Albrecht.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Carly. I know I always look forward to the LAPS report. You and the kids do a fabulous job in improving our community, but also it's nice to have them get involved with understanding what the value of our environment and what they can do to help make it better. I was just wondering, the disposal or the, yeah, the disposal of the invasive species, is that taken care of by yourselves, or does it come to our waste disposal people?
To the Langley City Yard, I guess you call it. That's where we take the blackberry.
Further, Counselor Stortebum.
Hi, Carly.
Hi.
Thanks so much for your presentation. It's always good to see you. Appreciate the hard work you do in our community, and I couldn't help but notice you mentioned the pollinator habitat that you're planning on introducing to the B.C. Hydro Right-of-Way. Is that in conjunction with the urban farm application, or is that independent of the urban farm proposal?
I couldn't tell you. I don't believe so. Rick, I don't know if you have some more information on that?
Counselor Stortebum through the mayor. No, that's a completely separate issue. This is just through the LAPS.
So that's a go for the pollinator habitat?
That's something their program, it has nothing to do with the hydro right-of-wake urban farm concept plan.
Okay. Well, I know there's a concern about bees.
Yes.
And I know that the numbers are down, so the idea of having bees pollinating in our community is a good thing, a healthy thing.
Yeah, we'll be planting some plants that will attract them in that area, the hydro right-of-way, this fall, so.
Brilliant.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you.
Counselor Martin.
Thank you. As a non-gardener, when you get rid of the blackberries, how do you stop them from coming back? Do you take the roots out and everything?
Yeah, so we usually cut them down, and then it's always really good to dig up the roots as well, but for large areas, we often don't have time to dig up the roots. So often, we just, we keep going back and cutting down the same area, and often it'll take about five years if you keep cutting them back.
Oh, does it?
Yes.
Okay.
To kind of expend, they will expend all their energy in the roots if you keep at it for five years.
Well, I've come to the conclusion, by being invaded by blackberries from the floodplain, I need a trail right behind my place, so you'll come and do them. You guys do a great job. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Well, seeing nothing else, thank you for coming. Great presentation. You might want to talk to Mr. Walker when he's handing out his grants. Feel free to apply to some. You know, he's helping out Langley City and the area a lot, so you guys are doing a lot, so I just see a win-win there. Not that, yeah, perfect. I think he walked into that himself, so with your presentation tonight, right on. Well, thank you again. You guys are doing a great job, and it gives people an opportunity to go out and gives them some self-worth, too. You get out there, you're working, helping out in the community, and doing something positive. Great to have young kids like yourselves doing this. Again, thank you.
Thank you very much for having me.
Okay. Next item we have is under the mayor's report, upcoming meetings. Next one is October 2, 2017. Next one after that is October 23. And now we have a Metro Vancouver update by Counselor Stortebum.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There have been no board meetings this past week. However, I would like to take this opportunity to introduce Metro Vancouver's RateOurHome.ca resource. Single-family homes are responsible for about 40% of the greenhouse gases coming from buildings. To reduce these emissions, tools... To reduce these emissions, tools are available to help people make decisions that are better for their families and the environment. Home energy labels, like the EnerGuide rating system, tell us how energy efficient a home is, how efficient it could become, and how it compares to other rated homes. Energy-efficient homes do more than save you money on utility bills. They are often healthier homes with better indoor air quality, fewer moisture problems, and are quieter and better insulated from outside temperatures and noise. Rateourhome.ca creates awareness of home energy labels to make carbon emissions and energy use in homes more visible to everyone. The home energy map on Rate Our Home.ca allows owners or builders to display their property's EnerGuide label. You can search properties by EnerGuide rating, type of home, and by location on the map. It's a great way to learn more about how homes perform when it comes to energy efficiency and carbon emissions. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Storedeboom. Next, we have library happenings. Councillor Martin.
Thank you very much. For September the 18th, the Science Literacy Week, Makey Makey, starts on Friday, September the 22nd, from 2:00 till 3:00. And you can learn what a makey makey is and give it a whirl. First, you use your artistic skills to create an animal from pipe cleaners, then using makey makey, give your animal the power of speech. Adults will have just as much fun as children. And the TAG, the Teen Advisory Group, is first Tuesday of each month, starting October the 3rd, from 6:30 till 8:00. TAG is a group of committed teens who volunteer their time and energy in support of their library. The TAG members meet to organize library programs for teens, volunteers, reading buddies, and help with library events. Meetings are fun and always include snacks. TAG membership looks great on resumes and college applications, and all activities earn volunteer hours, and you can apply at our library, and the new members are always welcome. And they're having a couple of lunch with TED series on September the 18th at Science on the Brain from 12:00 till 1:00. You can listen to fascinating stories about the brain from psychologist Dan Gilbert and brain researcher Jill "Bolt" Taylor. You can bring your lunch, and the library will supply the drinks. And the next TED series is Elon Musk's World of Technology, which is Wednesday, September the 20th, from 12:00 till 1:00. You can listen to a fascinating interview with Tesla inventor and CEO Elon Musk, whose latest project includes space exploration and underground highways. Again, you can bring your lunch, and the library will supply the drinks. And on Tuesday, September the 28th, from 6:00 till 8:00, they have a Prepare Your Garden for Winter, and you can join horticulturist Angelica Headley as she walks you through steps in getting your garden ready. And I just want to give an update on the library renovations. The main bank of public computers has been moved closer to the service desk for better service and to help with security. Shelving and furniture has been rearranged to provide a dedicated space for teens and more flexibility for programming. And we will be receiving additional shelving, and it will be, there'll be some final shifting in motion when we get that. Tiling and carpeting are complete. Painting will be finished by the end of the week, and several smaller updates to furniture and displays are in progress. And finally, I would like to announce that our permanent library manager, Kim Constable, will be returning from parental leave on September the 25th. She will be overlapping one day with the outgoing acting manager, Joanne Sleman. And I just want to say, Joanne has been a wonderful acting manager over this past year. I've really enjoyed working with her. But she did email me the other day, and she said, "Would you mind passing on my thanks to mayor and council for accommodating me here in Langley? I really have enjoyed working here so much, and Langley now feels like home. It doesn't take long to develop that feeling of ownership and belonging." So I say thank you publicly to Joanne, and she really has enjoyed her time here, and I certainly enjoyed working with her, so. And I will pass on our best wishes to her and the board on Wednesday. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Martin. Anything else from anybody, and what I've got, the chants? No?
Ooh, it's an open door.
Open door. Go ahead. I'll give you a shot. Okay. Bylaws. The next business item is bylaw 3025, and the motion is first and second reading of the bylaw cited as the discharge of a land use contract number 06A-74, bylaw 2017 number 3025. And this is at 5040205A Street. And the owners applied to have the land use contract discharged from the title of the property to facilitate a building permit application for a secondary suite. I need a mover and a secondary. Councillor Storedeboom, councillor Albrecht. Discussion? All those in favor? It's unanimous four. Second one we have is bylaw 3030. First and second bylaw for the, bylaw cited as the discharge of land use contract number 2373, bylaw 2017 number 3030. And this is at 2021544A Avenue. And this is for the same, is to, the owners applied to have a land use contract discharged from the title to facilitate a building permit application for a secondary suite. I need a mover and a secondary. Again, councillor Arnold and Storedeboom. All those in favor? It's unanimous four. Next item we have is the final reading of the bylaw cited as the Officer Establishment bylaw number 2011, number 2855, amendment bylaw number 32017, number 3026. I need a mover and a secondary. Councillor Martin, councillor Albrecht. All those in favor? Against? It's unanimous four. Next item we have is first and second reading of the bylaw cited as zoning bylaw 1996, number 2100, amendment number 1392017, number 3027. I need a mover and a secondary. Councillor Storedeboom, councillor Martin. Discussion at all? Seeing none? All in favor? Against? It's unanimous. Okay, the next one is the bylaw 3028. A motion, the final reading of the bylaw cited as the Fire Protection and Safety bylaw 2009, number 2784, amendment number 2, bylaw 2017, number 3028. I need a mover and a secondary. Councillor Pahal and councillor Storedeboom. All those in favor? It's unanimous four. Under the administrative reports, we have a traffic calming at Mashawd Crescent and 201A Street. And I'll let Mr. Baumhoff speak to it, but the motion will be that council approve traffic calming options A and B for Mashawd Crescent and 201A Street, 55A Avenue, including three speed bumps on Mashawd, two speed bumps on 201A, and temporary painted curb bulges with delineators at the intersection of Mashawd Crescent and 201A Street for an estimated budget of $55,000. Now you want it. Councillor Pahal, councillor Martin. Okay. Mr. Baumhoff, would you like to?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is the result of some investigative work that we did on traffic calming on Mashawd Crescent and the result of public consultation. And the public overwhelmingly supported both of the options to be completed at this time. So there was the option of doing one or the other, or both. And as you mentioned, the intersection will be, intersection work will be completed. That will involve narrowing the intersection with painted lines. It's more of a temporary nature of work. It would involve painted lines and bollards that would cause the traffic to see that there's a narrowing at the intersection, and the crosshocks would also be narrower crossing. And there's five speed pumps that would be installed both north or east and west of the intersection, as well as north of the intersection on 201A. So for a total cost of $55,000. And the reason why it's of temporary nature is that there are these plans to complete a greenway plan for Mashawd Crescent, so that would be completed next year, a concept plan, and then possibly future funding in future years. But that will involve further enhancements to the street and potentially additional traffic calming features as well.
Councillor Albrecht and Storedeboom?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Mr. Baumhoff. Just to be clear, there was a mailed-out ballot as well as a public open house.
Yes.
Because I just want to commend staff for doing a pretty thorough attempt at contacting and getting feedback from our community in order to establish some guiding principles on what we want to have in that particular area and the concerns raised. So if I could, just reinforce the public that if you're, if you want change and you want it to be done the right way, we need to hear from you when we have these public opportunities. So take advantage of them. And I just wanted to thank staff for doing that.
Councillor Storedeboom.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, too, wanted to compliment staff on being proactive in approaching the community. Linwood Park has become a very special place for a lot of people. Recent enhancements have caused the neighborhood to take a greater degree of ownership in the park and all that goes on there, and I'm really, really happy to see it. So as such, this initiative, while it may have been something that staff was looking at and recommending to council, it's really been driven by the community and the people who live there. I, too, wanted to compliment the residents of the area and thank them for their input, and thanks staff for a very creative approach, especially around the intersection of Mashawd and 201A. I think we'll probably be getting a lot of compliments, certainly comments, on that new configuration. And I just wanted to say thank you very much. I'm looking forward to seeing this happen. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councillor Pahal.
Yeah, thank you. I think this whole public consultation has been very well handled, and I'm really excited to see this move forward. Of all the things I've attended so far, this is the one that's solicited the most response for people in our community and the most positive response. I think with something like 80 to 90% support for traffic calming were proposed, which to me is unheard of for support. And I think what we've heard from residents is, "Let's get it done as fast as possible." So I'm looking forward to see this getting implemented. So thanks again.
Thank you. Anything else? Councillor Arnold.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It was interesting to councillor Storedeboom talk about Linwood Park. I'm over there fairly regularly for the dog-off-leash area, but even just watching the kids that are enjoying, especially a lot of the new stuff that we've put in, and that park is just so, so busy. And it's interesting, I get talking to people, and they say, "Well, where did that name Linwood come from?" And I say, "Well, see that apartment building over there? The house that was there before that was Mrs. Linwood's house." And people, "Oh." So it's, you know, it's an area where the kids enjoy it, the dogs enjoy it, people communicate with each other and have a good time. And so to make improvements to the traffic in the area, I think it's really been something we've been looking for, for a long time.
That's great. Anything else? Seeing none? All those in favor? Against? It's unanimous four. We've got some correspondence from Big Brothers Big Sisters. I just see that Mayor Froze is on there, and it's interesting, I guess it's just a general letter that goes out, so maybe we could reciprocate, and we'll send them one from the city to the township, and that's from council. So it's not just therefore I, it would be therefore Langley City Council. So, thank you very much. Anything else? Seeing none? I need a motion to adjourn. Councillor Storedeboom, councillor Arnold, all those in favor? It's unanimous four.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.